Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Gilman, are you there? Councilmember Batchard.
Yes, I'm here.
Laura, can you hear us now?
Councilmember Amrin.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Sharpie.
There.
And is Councilmember Gilman with us? Okay, I hear nothing at this point. Shut it down accordingly and hopefully she'll be jumping in, but she's attempting.
Let me try to unmute her.
Okay.
Laura, now can you hear us? Laura? She's going to leave the meeting and come back.
Okay.
She's got the technical
Okay.
Technical difficulty.
At this time, four councilmembers appointed for and hopefully the fifth later. Also at the people in front here, the city administrator Amy Newsom. And I believe Ross Arneson is on the phone or on the computer. And we welcome him. So at this time, are there any changes in the agenda?
I have none.
Additions, corrections, anything? If not, the motion is in order to approve the agenda as distributed.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Amrin, second by councilmember Batchard to approve the agenda as presented. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Okay, consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of the following. Item A, approval of bills. Item B, October 5th, 2020 council meeting. Item C, October 8th, 2020 Personnel Employee Relations meeting. Item D, October 12th, 2020 Special Council meeting. Item E, approve hiring of Denise Aldridge as EMT for Arlington Area Ambulance. Item F, accept grant and award $5,000 from the Center for Tech and Civic Life for Safe and Secure Election Administration in the City of Arlington in 2020. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by councilmember Morgan, second by councilmember Sharpie to approve the consent agenda as read. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion is carried. I do hear councilmember Gilman now.
She's on.
She's aboard. At this time, is there anyone wishing to address the council? Okay, so none. Move on to announcements. City Ms. Newsom.
Just to that, the notice of the general election is coming up in two weeks from tomorrow, I believe it is.
Two weeks from tomorrow, general election.
We have three on the ballot, there will be voting for three councilmembers. We have five on the ballot, Matt Sharpie, Craig Boss, Joe Morgan, Rick Amrin, and John Thomas. And the public will be voting for three.
Um, are we not voting for that fourth one too?
That will not take place at the general election, but that will be action that the council takes after the general election.
After the general election.
Okay, item seven, communications.
Copy of the September 14th EDA minutes and the September 28th special EDA minutes for the council to read so that council knows to keep the open communications so council can see what's happening at the EDA meetings.
Any questions on those minutes? All right, item eight, reports. So this is where I'd like to
He is here.
Done? Okay. Oh, sorry, they're here.
Andrew, would you switch with Tim?
Yes.
Tim's gotta get out of here.
We want to get Tim out of here. Thank you.
Okay, I'm off.
You're up.
Sorry. Okay, so you'll see there's a couple maps in front of you, councilmembers. One of which shows the potential for what's being discussed as the new wastewater dog park. And we can call it a better name for it in the future. But so the planning mission with EDA and me as staff time with Mr. Newsom looked at different potential places to commission a dog park. So I think the idea originated with EDA. And after some giving out of where it could be, we settled that perhaps the wastewater plant could be the most like adequate place to put it. Because we have a large amount of existing fencing there as well as a beautiful creekside location. And it is nearby the popular walking trail of Sports and Park, et cetera. And so that's just a sort of draft layout for it there. I spoke with the city engineer and with the Department of People's Services. And we have confirmed that there are no safety hazards or any other issues of having a dog park in that location. And so I will pursue some grant applications as well as maybe more to finalize the design a little more and figure out what the material and labor cost would be to install a dog park. Unless anybody thinks that perhaps we should consider a different location, which is okay as well.
Who maintains that particular space right now?
Right now? That's a good question, actually. I'm not sure. It's city-owned land.
Right.
It's the same.
You just want as the moors go in there and do some mowing or?
David, do you have them know that or?
Okay.
I do not know if People's Service or?
Okay.
Okay.
So are you looking at this whole entire black area, like gray all the way down to the trick?
Yes.
This whole part?
Yep. And so if you see where the orange is, that is the existing fence that we can take advantage of. And then the entire area where it's outlined, you could have a north entrance along that northern path up there. And then install like a gravel parking lot of the sort of where the entrance is to compost area now. And have a small dog area, a little thing on the left. So I just printed out smaller than I meant to. And then, yeah, include that entire area. The dimensions on that. So that would create a 1.6 acre dog park as drawn on there. And it would be 1,665 feet of fence. And it would take advantage of 730 feet of existing fence. It would create a dog park that's 700 feet long by 70 to 100 feet wide. And there are a large number of grants out there that we can look at pursuing and, you know, to be built in phases, money stages. If you look at the second map, I actually accidentally left on the layer for the dog parks on this map. And those were the other options that I sort of ran by. Both on the mission in the EDA, look at the top left. That's the nickel property that would create a massive dog park. Probably pretty expensive. The stormwater pond in the southwest there. I was told to avoid that because of the danger posts with animals. Then there's another thought to maybe have one in town in the cemetery. It would produce a very small dog park. They've got potential cemetery advantage space. So that's how we set it on wastewater.
If you look at the space at the park behind the hospital. So there's a little swing set and there's kind of a big tree area.
Yeah.
It's quite, it's a pretty large area.
True, that is another potential that we could look into. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't look into that specifically, but I could go back and see what kind of potential we need there. What kind of park we could play in there.
Hey, Tim.
Yes.
That area behind the the hospital, that park that, that he's referring to, that often gets a lot of standing water back there in the cemetery.
Pretty messy.
Okay.
It has gotten better since.
Haven't had the big rings either.
No.
You're right. There's been some improvements.
Right, perhaps we're looking maybe even a little bit. Okay, so I can come back to you with some updates on that in the future. So the second map shows something that I think could be really exciting. I'm not sure if I brought this to council yet, but I've been talking about this with the planning mission in the EDA as well. And to talk to Parks Committee about this next week. Is this is what I think of as sort of pie in the sky, large picture idea for a future creekside park. I think that the High Island Creek is the city of Arlington's, you know, largest and most under taken advantage of natural asset. And I've been mapping and, you know, noting the locations of of the creek, ponds, process alongside of it and potential areas that we could have a large park in the city of Arlington. Including a recreational trail that we use for bicycling, walking, et cetera, that would end up being a few miles long and connecting your existing recreational trail. And potentially wastewater dog park. As well as tying in the school athletic complex, the cemetery and other publicly owned lands along the creek that we have now. And the workshop. This map also printed out that's small, but what this would take would, you know, be formalizing the board, the boundaries of the public works area. Perhaps putting a circle at the end of Main Street and Avenue Street. And formalizing the boards and cemetery a bit more. But actually the grids there would work well now. But anyway, this is sort of a big picture idea. And there are a lot of grants floating around there with a lot of money going around from the federal government and so the DNR that I think would be really worth applying to. And there's this whole list of these ones that were accepted last year. I think you know this out to you, I suppose. I just found this today. Last year's funded grants for these kind of projects brought by the DNR under this federal recreational trail grant program. And they give you up to $150,000 for a project like this with a 25% match in the city. And then there's also a transportation alternatives grant of which I need to have the letter of intent in at the end of the month. If I, or if the city is interested in going down this path and perhaps seeing if we can get money for this project. That one, I believe it's a 10% match that Sydney's to give. And that one, I think it's up to a million dollars, which we wouldn't need to apply to something like that. But Transportation Alternatives Grant, the letter of intent does ask for 50 words maximum of conversations with elected officials with potential for written support from the project. So I thought I'd bring this, sort of high level, very high level. The funding for the transportation alternatives wouldn't be until 2024. But I guess these things take a long time to move this kind of money around. So I thought I'd bring you this nascent idea and give you feedback or a no or a yes. You know, let's do this, use your staff time for other things, so. Thought I'd put it in front of you.
Nice big picture look and, and definitely something that I think we should go after and look. Look at, I'm not sure, I heard your the pitch last time and there's a lot of things we can do with minimal money to make the trails or make the paths and, and have some nice open spaces, place places.
Yeah, and we've been discussing this under EDA and planning and zoning. Because his planning and zoning mind looks at it and does the map. And the EDA supports it as another way to encourage people to move to our community. It's amenity.
Yeah. And I think it really would be, and it'd be something that you could sort of see an axis or forming as an axis of future development as well for the city as residential areas expand. So.
Thoughts from the council and we heard from Michelle, anybody else?
I like it. Just gotta get the grant.
Yeah, so keep pursuing it though. Not.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So my thought is, is I do like the big picture scope. You presented two things here. So one is a dog park that's gonna probably take some money.
Right.
Depending on what sort of grant you could get.
Yeah.
So priority wise is, you know, is the dog park first or is the trail?
I think the dog park will be first because that's a smaller project, a more achievable short-term type thing, isn't it? Like we could do construction in the spring for under, under $20,000. You know, perhaps under 10, depending on how we work this out. And creekside park is more of a long-term thing. Like I said, the transportation alternatives that grant won't even fund us until 2024. But it's something that you, you know, forefunding in 2024, you have to start thinking about it now. So it's a surprise.
Chances are he would not get approved on his first try at that grant.
Yeah, yeah, and there are lots of other grants that found out as near as 2022, so. But yeah, they are also doing like this February, this March or through these DNR ones that I think are, yeah, their best potentials. Yeah. And then Amy, did you want me to touch on the potential for the housing button as well?
Yep, I will put the information up on the Ring Central map so the folks at home can see. We were approached by Lea Prowl, Realtor Lea Prowl, about looking into a potential housing development, which is off of County Road 17. If you can see, yep, south of there, an additional 75 acres. She, don't look at that, just imagine.
Where's my copy?
You could see how it comes down. Rick is looking at it on Ring Central, the additional 75 acres. And it is just approaching the city. Would the city be interested if that? They could not build houses there if it was in the township because of the 40 acre rule. They could put one home per 40 acres. But if it was annexed into the city, there could be one and two acre lots, half acre lots, one acre lots, two acre lots.
Yeah.
So I've reached out to the township because I want to be open with them and communicate with them and tell them that this is possibly coming and start the dialogue with them. We do not have an orderly annexation in place that says that, yes, we'll do this and we'll give you six years or the taxes. There's no agreement in place with Arlington Township right now. Not that we maybe couldn't work on something. It just depends how fast this whole project moves along. So I was just curious, councilmembers thoughts, reactions to the possibility of expanding the city that much?
It's exciting, however, that's going to be very expensive bringing utilities out there. Because I believe they stop right at that right at that tan area.
I believe they do, yes.
I would recommend that the developer pay for the infrastructure cost of bringing out city sewer and water. And it's currently MVEC electric territory. We would have to talk with MVEC if that would come into the city electric utilities.
As far as staff time, Leah has talked about working to produce a high-level master plan with the city as what we'd be interested in seeing.
What a housing development would look like.
And she and I discussed last week about, you know, perhaps having half acre lots from the northern end development and then, you know, using the appropriate zones to control the way that develops and then having one, two, three acre lots as you can break it south. Because that's a housing model that we don't really see much option for right now. Those larger lots. And there could be a big potential for that, meaning something like a drawing in residence. You'll be funded to expand in the city.
I think it's exciting. I think I'd be all open for that.
Are the councilmembers comments supportive moving forward?
I would support a little bit. At the last, the EDA meeting, because like I said, we don't get stuff. It's something we don't have.
Sure. Matt was there when Leah came to the EDA.
Okay, looks like council is supportive of the idea.
So I will be going to the next township. Both Tim and I will go to the next township meeting, which is in November, the second Monday in November.
All right, as far as my report goes, those are the big ticket items. We've been a little dry on building permits last couple of weeks, but that's sort of balanced out from a big spike a couple of weeks ago. So we're still ahead of schedule from last year. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Off to a green eye.
Chief. Good evening.
Good evening. First off, I guess just a recap, our September calls for service. We ended up with 228 calls for service. The big ticket item was the crap stuff once again. Last, last month, we were probably at 200 lots. We're up a little bit this year. Here today, we're at 2,484 compared to people's making it at that time, which is 3,270. So once again, no major crimes or criminal events that happened there. Any questions?
Is somebody gonna say something? No? Okay, next, Andrew, consider revising the personnel policy at our employee relations committee. We discussed looking at extending that emergency response time for police officers specifically. It's currently at 20 minutes. And looking at police officer retention and recruitment. If we need to fill those positions again, it, the position would be more attractive to our officers if that response time was 30 minutes. It would allow them, if your spouse worked in the cities and you wanted to live somewhere in between, it would allow them the opportunity to live, to accommodate wherever their spouse may work. And Andrew, did you want to talk about your thoughts on that changing that response time from 20 minutes to 30 minutes?
Yeah, I just went back and looked at our, what probably would have been fall out in 2017, 2019. To just see what kind of stuff. We're maybe past the end of 2014, 2017.
It's in the packet. Right now I have 2020 up on the screen for the Ring Central people. It's starting with 2020.
You can see in 2020 there itself, most of those are, one was an actual burglary. But there we have a number of alarms, a number of noise complaints and some we call suspicious activity. And as it stands in our personnel policy right now, we will respond to 20 minutes to emergency calls. And I was just taking that definition of emergency calls and just applying it to do some of these things that we would have been called out for. And I think some of these things probably wouldn't necessarily rise for the emergency. I think the whole reason of the 20-minute response time is, is that we are a police department. If a major emergency does happen, our police department needs to come in. We need to start the cleanup process and the evidence gathering process. Or those kind of things. So I'm thinking if we just bump another 10 minutes onto our response time. I'd like a little while with you to obviously work for us because I'm interested in right into the belt lane and the sewer area. And I really can be an expert of housing prices and availability right now. But the only thing I've noticed is, is just the housing actions at Belt Lane and the sewer and their cost compared to being close to Charlie. Pretty, could be a big thing to somebody who wants to work for us in the future. I know sometimes there may be some concern about opening your response time to 20 minutes or 30 minutes, but you know, again, it's the biggest thing that maybe we would respond to is like the domestic assault or something like that. And if you're thinking that, you know, police officers should respond within that time limit and stop investigating yourself, that's, I don't think that's a big reason why we have that called. Most domestic, what's a 911 call is placed, they're gonna be over probably in 10 minutes. We're gonna have a sale leaves or calm down or something like that. So, so really the, the response time that we're asking of our officers is so that they're available to come in and to be able to investigate and handle a criminal event or happen afterwards. Process evidence, you know, make any other referrals there from that point after the event. I think it would just be a benefit in retaining people that are willing to bring in the future.
Well, just speaking personally and being in a few times when we've been hiring police personnel and it has, you know, that, that issue has come up and been dealt with just on a case-by-case basis. I know we had a gentleman that was named police chief here on an interim basis and he was more than 20 minutes away from Arlington. And that was allowed because it was an interim situation. As was our last chief, he moved in and could not find a place to live. And he did have a place to live, which was within 30 minutes. So again, that was dealt with on an individual basis and then down the road a little ways, he did find a place. I'm gonna speak for the people that are out there from Arlington that love to see police officers, in this case, firemen, ambulance, whatever, live here. They feel that someone that's part of the community that has a stake in the community is a, is a stronger advocate for the community. And I think by going from 20 minutes to 30 minutes, you're moving in the other direction. You're saying to someone, now you can live in early young America and you can be up in street. And I know at the time of hiring, it does get, it can get to be an issue. It hasn't been just terribly bad in the past few years as far as knowing that we're turning away some good candidates because of it. But I'm gonna speak for the people that, that really enjoy having city employees that live in, in the city of Arlington. But I would invite other councilmembers to the China.
I agree with Mr. Mayor 100%. I think it's important that we try to keep a police force, ambulance force, fire people who actually live in the community and are committed to the community. Anybody else?
Joe? I know for me, we moved that back to 20 minutes from, I can't remember what it was before that, Rich. I don't know if you remember not.
10 or 15.
It was 10 or 15 minutes prior to that. And the reason why we did move it to 20 is because of that interim chief that moved to Norwood. And even at 20, we thought it was too far away or too long of a response time. I know that if, the way I feel, we, we're investing a lot of money into our departments and, and I'd like to get the response time as low as we can so that if there, if something does happen unfortunately, that they're there as soon as possible.
Rick?
I just did a
He's got a map.
Google search here, trying to do a radius map from Arlington via a 30-minute timeframe. Looks like you're hitting, you know, Norwood in America. You're getting, you're stretching the belt lane. You're not quite to the sewer Henderson's covered. I mean, I don't know how much more fault you're gonna get from that little bit more distance. But I'm also somebody that when people ask where's Arlington, I usually reply with, it's about 30 minutes from everything, so.
Just one question, chief, as far as if there's a, say there's a fire, fire call in the middle of the night, midnight, one o'clock or whatever. Is that something the police, well, let's just say it's three or four in the morning. That's something the police feel that, you know, they need to be there just as quickly as a police that's something the police feel that, you know, they need to be there just as quickly as the police as the fire department?
That could be a scenario I would say, no, because I just think that fire firms.
Okay.
If we don't have an officer on, and we just got somebody on the call, we're talking about a fire alarm. Generally, I would think that police would have to be called up unless for some reason the police department explicitly was like this to do that.
Okay.
There's certain can respond, but they don't think, you know, like fire incidences or medicals aren't necessarily automatic. Police officers would be called up also.
Okay. Input by any other council members on that?
In a way, I do agree with Mayor and I along, keep it police in town and that won't be a part of the, but the reality is finding officers is the easiest thing to do. We gotta be somewhat flexible, at least so that we can retain the people.
Yeah, a little bit that I could throw in is out of the five council members, I believe, three of us work probably in that 30, 30 minute plus outside of, you know, town. So it is challenging. And I think in an optimal environment, having them live in town is absolutely preferred. But if their spouse, you know, has a different career path and that requires, you know, a job that's, you know, way up in the cities and they're trying to split the two, you know, might lose that person. So it's kind of a, kind of a challenging, challenging topic. If we hold out and then, you know, that this is a good candidate or we lose the current employee, it's gonna be challenging.
Well, along with that or whatever too is that it's not necessarily where they live. I mean, if if we did not have any on call, they could live three hours away from their job if they wanted to. It, you know, this only really relates to the on-call time. I know other people in the past, other officers in the past or whatever, have just found a place to stay in town with relatives or whoever to accommodate.
Would we like more information with the council, like some time to think about it and put it on the next council agenda again?
Sure.
So that's kind of what I'm feeling.
Yeah.
So say, I'm assuming there'll be a, an article in the newspapers, so we may get some input from the community.
Well, you know, in the past, as long as the council was willing to be flexible in situations that, that when it comes up like we have in the past. But to put it in there as an automatic, that's I would find a position. But to be flexible, like some of the issues that were examples that were brought up. Okay.
Do you have anything specific you'd like the chief of police to look into?
I suppose the only thing you could, you know, I mean, just what are other communities in the area, which are very similar in distance from a larger community? What are the, as far as the response time?
I tackle this from Lakefield. And it kind of varies, you know, wherever you go. A lot of small departments are trying to balance, people have a lot of the flexibility to kind of, you know, branch out for other reasons, for personal reasons. And another thing that kind of comes in line with that is just the on-call rate. The closer to town they have people, the higher on-call rate that they pay, definitely, if they, if they're only paying $1 or $2 an hour, they they have response times being as, you know, within the county, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, you know, this kind of things. So it's a, it's a struggle in a small town. And the only reason that I guess I bring it up is in the nine years that I was in Lakefield, I can probably tell two fingers, things that would have been like an emergency that me or one of the houses had called over. So just if you're playing the odds, that's the thing. You know, the other thing I mentioned too is that if there is a huge incident, and I foresee myself, and I'm just on-call alone out in the dark. But if there's a huge incident, you think that that I'm gonna be called up, that's the only thing, on-call, I would definitely be there. So it's just that kind of stuff. It's, you know, just kind of came up as an idea, as maybe just kind of a, maybe a little more lucrative for us. And we just help people get geographic, you know.
All right.
See it next time. Next thing for Andrew will be to look at the two possible contracts for prosecution services, either going with Sibley County or Ken Jansen. And we're trying to make a decision now because if we go with Ken Jansen, he needed time to prepare to be our attorney. So I will let Andrew take over now.
Thank you. I got this, I got this subject at the council earlier, early board meetings. I guess I had just the flat fee rate of paying attorney for, for missing year and paying missing year prosecutions kind of caught my eye because there wasn't anything that I, that we did in my previous job there. So that kind of led me to soliciting some other attorneys in the area to see if we can get a hourly rate basis of billing, rather than paying a flat rate. And a couple of attorneys came back and were able to do us some, some deals that I thought would be pretty terrible. The last council meeting, we voted to leave the, the deal of counting based on Ken Jansen's proposal of a $135 an hour billable, hourly rate with a cap on there for $4,000. And after that, after that vote, we then also, I guess, in good faith, went back to the county and presented them with what we had discovered in the local community, either match that or beat it. The meeting that Amy and I went to, I guess they, they did say that they would be willing to match that. And if, you know, if you look in their, in their current response to the rate, we talk about their compensation costs, $135 an hour. With the salary costs or employee benefits cost change annually, the annual compensation rate may be adjusted accordingly. It still keeps signaling to me that our contract directly comes directly back to making sure that they are hired. That we're funding by attorney. And I simply didn't want to, you know, open up the San Lawrence and make any hard feelings about this whole year either. But I think when Amy and I returned back to the county, the topic about that, I think it brings me so little less than, than loving the world, hurting the situation. And when it was all said and done, I thought, you know, if I got two attorneys to tell me that it's easy, no more hour, hourly rate, because that's $4,000. I just feel like at this point, the only true way that you're gonna see that same thing, I go with Ken Jansen, effectively, would give me the opportunity to develop a really good working relationship with him. When this all started with Dave, the attorney, he had found out that this was happening through the newspaper. And I guess I wasn't aware of that, but Amy let me know that that was happening. So I immediately called Dave and asked to meet with him and drove over to be a little bit tougher about us looking into other services. And I just explained to Dave, I said, you know, this isn't about, you know, your service or any hard feelings about this, or the other. But I just explained to him it was about trying to save some money. And then, you know, also saying about cutting staff. And so if I can save money in other places, that was my only, my only intention behind, you know, looking for another, another option. And I thought the meeting went pretty well. I mean, you know, we discussed it, like, and talked back and forth. And I thought, I thought, I thought the meeting went well, I got those meetings out there. But my feeling was about the change when we went back a second time to talk to him about negotiating the contract. And when I essentially scolded in front of everybody, there was something that I thought I was free of before, but it's been to me. So I think that kind of signaled to me that, I think, my plan to save money, the only way that this is really gonna happen is if I can start a new relationship with a new city attorney. Because for whatever reason, I don't know what is happening with our, with our relationship with county. I just feel like if our cap is $40,000, and they're using that $40,000 to fund one of their attorneys, I feel like we're gonna pay $40,000. We might even pay 42, but they'll tell us if we did 42, they'll go, and then next year the cap will be 42. And I feel like we'll pay $42,000. And I just, I don't know if we can, if we can really get to the end of the table. Ken Jansen has come back and he has, he's proposed $135 an hour, trial time of my, it is not for the bill. And he even, I said the cap rate is $38,000. He's, he's been only at $38,000 for two years. The next two years, 21 and 22, are they gonna be with $38,000 with Ken Jansen? Yeah, it'd be, I guess it'd be my recommendation is I appreciate, you know, I guess what was trying to happen with the county attorney. But I just feel like that maybe we could probably better serve the citizens and do a little, do a little better custodians of our, of our budget money by going with, and to, and to share.
Well, just speaking for myself, if I, as mayor, if I sense that there's a conflict or there's an issue where you may have problems working with the county attorney, if I gotta take sides, I'm gonna take sides on our city employee and support you and what you feel, you know, is best in your relationship with that person. And I sense that if we would decide to go with Sibley County, you would go into it with not the greatest feeling of cooperation on the other side.
Well, just the whole process, I just, I felt kind of cut out of the whole process. Even after we had given them our letter of intent to keep the contract, I found out that Amy, that Amy office, and they were wondering who to do negotiations with. And during their discussions, many of them were being brought up, that's something I learned from Amy. So I was already being cut out of the new negotiations. And I feel like maybe it was, you know, because of that, that I even decided to look for something else. And then, you know, and then being a public meeting, county attorney missionaries of thinking that county attorney and I had had a nice meeting and kind of cooled the waters, and then we scolded in that meeting by the county attorney, we were very good days in the moment. So I just, I don't know. I just, I just don't, I just, no feeling I could equally be involved in the process. And he's pretty excited to bring on our business and expanding his law firm. And he is really excited about it. I think he wants our business and he wants to work with us. That's, that's what I feel.
We received that contract today, so it was sent out an email to council earlier today. And there's copies available at the meeting this evening of the contract with Ken Jansen. Was not available in time for the packet.
I just looked through it briefly. I see if there is a, if there is a time when we, we do want to terminate the contract with the 60 days, literally 60 days. So currently with the county, we have six months, six months notice, just a 60 day, that's a little more liberal when that's, you know.
This is, I'm trying to figure out how to answer this question. But is this someone who's gonna be in the law business for several years going forward to where we could build a relationship, you know, five, 10 years down the road?
Absolutely, I think so. As far as the process was, was maybe a couple of, from a couple of attorneys. But I also reached out to, sorry to point to you, the one who, who was also a council member in Taylor. And he's the one that suggested Ken, he's, they're trying to get Ken, they know, they works. Ken already does Glendales, Ken already does the city of Walbert. I think, and I think Ken is, he's, he's a, he's a, he's a city also. It was even like 20 videos suggested, I mean, pretty valuable.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Gilman, councilmember Vacher, anything?
No, I have nothing.
Yeah, I think I'm fine with going with that Jan skin or whatever. I think, you know, if Andrew, the chief, is comfortable and feel like the working relationship's gonna be better, the cost is relative the same, and they're gonna be around for a while, like Joe was saying, build a relationship. I see that, I guess I'm in favor of that.
This has, has our attorney Arneson had a chance to review this?
He received it today at the same time that council received it by email. So Attorney Arneson, have you had a chance to look at the contract with Ken Jansen?
Yes. And I think it's acceptable as to form. I did want to just give the council historical perspective. As you recall, I initiated the change because the prosecutions were spiking and I just didn't have the time to do it. It was becoming almost a full-time job. And at the time, we negotiated the contract with the county. Our court cases had gone up from, you know, 40 or 50 a year, up to 200. And so we, we negotiated that contract at kind of the peak of the volume. So it was considered a fair contract price at the time. Of course, what we experienced this last year was a significant drop in the prosecutions. And so the contract price as negotiated did not seem fair. Based on the volume of prosecutions, the county attorney's office was actually handling. But that wasn't the county attorney's fault. That was just a matter of happenstance on our end. We had two of our four officers who were substantially off duty for a good share of the year. And also, I think the coronavirus maybe cooled the jets of some of our normal suspects. And I, so I think the volume of crime also went down. And so that's why we got into the present situation. So I guess, I didn't hear everything that the chief said, but has the chief been uncomfortable working with the county attorney's office?
You know, it's not that I've been uncomfortable. I guess it's more or less how I've been treated. If I'm gonna go into business or go into a contract or something, I want to feel like I have a partner to that person. And they're gonna do everything they can to make sure that we're gonna make the best service for our dollars. And since Since this negotiations or this started with, with the county attorney, I just kind of felt that. But I think Amy could back me up on that with that being a good testimony.
Yeah, I was there too.
He was not treated well.
Yeah, no.
None of us were actually, we're going to be honest.
Really, that's, you know, this might be here. I mean, essentially, we're the customer, right? They're providing service for us. We're paying now.
Correct.
And then to have, you know, have that reaction from the three people that go there from the city to meet with them, it's kind of disheartening to, to hear.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. I guess I wasn't involved in the process, but I guess I'm, I'm a little surprised that you were treated that way. As I understand it, the county attorney is not planning to run for reelection or reappointment. And so that's another, I guess, unknown going forward. You know, we can't predict who the new county attorney is going to be. Of course, Mr. Jansen and the Gavin firm, you know, that's a private law firm. And they've had a lot of turnover in recent years. But if Mr. Jansen indicates that he's planning to stick around for a while, then maybe it's worthwhile to at least try his services. So I guess those are all my comments.
Thank you, Russ.
Hey, any motion to take action on this?
I'll make a motion to, that we should sign the contract with Jan skin.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by council member Batcher, second by council member Omerion to enter into an agreement for prosecuting attorney services from Kenneth Jansen. That's J A N S S E N. And then he is office out of Glencoe. This agreement would be for a two-year duration. Cost not to exceed thirty eight thousand dollars. And that rate is going to keep for the two years. That cap is in place for two years. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. There wasn't a resolution.
There was not a resolution for that. So I will reach out to the county attorney's office. Let them know that the notice to terminate stands from March thirty first.
Yeah, so the new, the new one won't take place until
April first.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. September financial report, item C.
Okay, for September, we should be at seventy five percent of our budget for expenditures. And that's what we're looking at with these financial reports. We're always looking at the expenditures. Administration is at sixty six percent. Public safety, which is our police and fire, is sitting at seventy six point ten percent. Public works at sixty five, parks forty two. I had highlighted the ambulance fund as we spoke about during the workshop. We have not received the bills from the city of Gaylord yet. So while it looks like she's only spent thirty two percent of her budget, Jamie, we actually don't know what that real number is. She appears to have a lot of money still sitting in her fund, but we don't know that real number until we get the bills from Gaylord. For the other tax abatement revolving loans, we're sitting at seventy three percent. The enterprise funds are at seventy six percent. The water is at eighty nine percent and the storm sewer is at a hundred and twenty four percent. The enterprise funds, I would like to tackle when we talk about budgeting next year. I think we will talk about focusing on those enterprise funds. Some of them that are not, the budget isn't quite right with those. But I needed some time to take a look at them and really understand changes we might need to do if we need to adjust those rates next year. And capital equipment, the CIP, we're at seventy eight point six, seven percent. The two thousand nine Geo project, that's at six hundred and two percent. That's the one we paid off. That's why the number is so, so high on that one. Because we paid off the two thousand nine street improvement project. But most of those are paid all at one crack. That's why those are all at a hundred percent right now. Overall, it's at seventy three point six nine percent of the budget. So we're on track.
Any idea what, I mean, any ballpark estimate, what the Gaylord?
I do not have any estimate even of what those are going to be.
That's something we should reach out, tell them and say we want to peggy that up. And close it out. I mean, we're nearing the year end. I would think they would.
I would think they'd want to.
They would want to close it out themselves. We're just, yeah, not knowing is kind of bothering us.
Just to have to balance, curious what that's going to swing. Basis point plus away from what?
Right.
Could you maybe get involved in this, please, with?
City of Gaylord.
City of Gaylord?
Yes.
And get that taken through.
I will, I will reach out to them.
Any questions on the financial report? Can you move on to item nine, resolution fifty seven dash twenty twenty, resolution relating to designation of polling place?
This is one that we approve every year. Vicky passed this along to me that we have to designate polling places for two thousand twenty one. So like I said, a resolution that has to be passed each year.
As it stands, next year will not be.
Correct, but there could be a special election.
Yeah, it would be a special election.
Since we're on the topic of the election and voting, something that I was crossing my mind and I don't know if others have maybe thought about it, but you see a lot of stores that get you coming in one door and out another. And on this far side over here, we do have, you know, the opportunity where you could have the in, you know, people coming in the main door and going out the side one over there. And then, you know, just to cut down that contact. So folks leaving wouldn't be passing those coming in. And certainly in these times, people are concerned about that, dispense and why not.
I can pass that along to Vicky when she's setting up for election day.
Hey, would someone wish to introduce resolution fifty seven dash twenty?
I'll introduce resolution fifty seven dash twenty twenty relating to workplace location for all elections in twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution fifty seven dash twenty twenty introduced by council member Omerion, second by council member Batcher, and that is a resolution relating to designated polling place location for all elections that may take place in twenty twenty one. For the discussion. Hearing none, vote by roll call. Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Member Batcher.
Yes.
Member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
And council member Omerion.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed. The resolution is adopted. Resolution fifty eight dash twenty twenty, resolution approving the longevity and incentive compensation plan for Arlington area EMTs.
This is okay, Matt, if I, Matt brought this up, that this be reinstated. We were under the impression that it had gone away when partnered with Gaylord and they raised the on-call rate to seventeen dollars an hour. The incentive pay had gone away and they had looked at paying some of them out at a percentage. But I don't believe that ever happened. I spoke with some that are up for ten years and they did not receive any type of percentage paid out. So we had talked about getting it back on in the form of a resolution. So we have documentation that the council approved an incentive pay. And this was brought up at the employee relations personnel committee. And the council members on that committee had a couple of changes. It used to be two thousand after the fifth year, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand and six thousand after the twenty fifth year. This is the recommendation that came from that committee was to change it to three thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, five thousand. And after twenty five years, you will get a plaque recognizing your service to the Arlington area ambulance. Otherwise, the same thing, we have the same things in effect. They have to be an EMT who puts in eight hundred hours of service per year to be eligible for this. It's taxable, taxable income for them. They'll get paid out in the month of December of the year, like at their, their ten years.
So is it just paid at five years and just paid at ten years? So it's like five bonuses that they're getting? Or is it a yearly bonus?
It's just one time.
So after completion of the fifth year.
You get your check for a three thousand dollar bonus.
Then ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five.
And that's the way it was.
This is, it was the past.
We didn't change anything.
Just reinstated what was already there. Yeah, I think the, the, the big plus to this is, is that eight hundred hours. So we're sitting at a time and, and that's been historically, from what I'm hearing, is the challenge is to get individuals to commit to that time and, and actually do that at a time. So now they have just a little bit more incentive to do it. You know, and at that five years, that's, you know, seventy five cents an hour based on that.
Eight hundred hours.
Right? So it's, it's, it's almost like a, just a shift premium, right? In the end, but they're going to get one month some, right? So they've got to work for it. They've got to do the time, which is what we want. We want, we want people filling shifts. So it's just a little bit extra incentive to do so. And if they don't, then they don't qualify. They got to continue to get the hours. Well, and that's why I would.
That, that's why my question is why there's no difference between fifth, tenth, twentieth and twenty fifth. I'm looking at this thinking incrementally, just go up from three thousand to five thousand by five hundred each year. Fifth year, it's three thousand, tenth year, it's thirty five hundred. At least then you're tacking on on top of what had already been.
Do you guys want to talk about that?
Yeah, so the, the challenge, so with five years, you think about keeping someone for five years, you've accomplished something. Now granted, we want to, you know, you'd want to keep them much longer than that, but the reality is people are moving around like, you know, you get an employee and you, you have them there for five years. You, you hit the jackpot. So this is that incentive to, to get into the five years and then hopefully we keep them much longer than that. But times change, you know, family, you know, priorities and stuff come and, and change. So.
Part of this too, so you know, it was back before he originally took over, Arlington had a, an old retirement pension type thing. Well, finding people after it was hard to keep track of everything. They decided to change it to this as more of a, keep people on, keep them going. And they've been taking that return pension and it's walking into this, this incentive.
I'll introduce resolution fifty eight dash twenty twenty approving a lon- longevity and incentive compensation plan for Arlington area ambulance EMTs.
I'll second that.
Hey, council member Batcher introduced resolution fifty eight dash twenty twenty. It was seconded by council member Sharpie. That is a resolution approving a longevity and incentive compensation plan for the Arlington area ambulance EMTs. Is there further discussion?
This will be, this is still retrograde.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Omerion.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Batcher. Council member Batcher.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution fifty nine dash twenty twenty, that is a resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Arlington Fire Relief Association.
The Fire Relief Association submitted an application that will go to the state for gambling at the bowling alley. It's something that council needs to approve and needs to approve it so that we can sign off on the application and they can send it to the state.
I'll introduce resolution fifty nine twenty twenty approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Arlington Fire Relief Association.
Council member Batcher introduced resolution fifty nine dash twenty twenty, it was seconded by council member Morgan. There is a resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Arlington Fire Relief Association. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Omerion.
Yes.
Council member Batcher.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Member Morgan.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. New business, okay, item fourteen.
There is one more. One more resolution.
Oh, yes, a sign one.
The sign one. That one did not make its way into the.
It's actually twelve on mine.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, you're right, Paul. Yep, sixty dash twenty twenty, resolution approving a sign loan to Charlotte Anderson. Doing businesses hip hop family shop for signage or business located on three thirty nine West Main Street.
This was approved by the, let me see if I can find it. It did not get included in the packet. I apologize. I'm going to put it up on Ring Central so that you can see it if you are on Ring Central. Yes. So it's on Ring Central. This was, I can't project on the screen as well. This was approved at the EDA level. It comes out of that fund two oh four, the incentive programs for businesses. And this is a fifty fifty match to encourage businesses to put up new signage for the buildings. Her total is eight hundred and ten dollars for that sign above hip hop family shop. So the EDA would put in fifty percent match, but she has to stay in business for three years.
So the amount that the EDA would be put would be four hundred?
Four hundred and five dollars, correct.
And the sign meets all the restrictions.
She has to have it approved, right? A permit for her sign has to be approved by zoning.
She's changing what's up.
No, I believe she's just repairing. She's actually just repairing the one she has to make it, because it has been up there for ten years. And the same people who I believe put it in ten years ago are going to be doing the work on her sign.
I'll introduce resolution sixty dash twenty twenty approving a sign loan to Charlotte Allison, hip hop family shop for a sign at her business located at three thirty nine West Main Street.
Second?
Second.
Resolution sixty dash twenty twenty introduced by council member Batcher, second by council member Sharpie. That is a resolution approving a sign loan to Charlotte Anderson, doing businesses hip hop family shop for a sign at her business located at three thirty nine West Main Street. Further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Batcher.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Omerion.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Now we move to, I don't think there's anything on unfinished business. Now we move to, I don't think there's anything on unfinished business. Item fourteen of your new business, approved by our request to close Main Street for Arlington, right through December fifth, twenty twenty.
Matt, would you like to? Say something about it.
Hi, Matt Nelson and Sarah Khan, apparently the chamber here. Uh, last week I came and, and spoke about the plan, um, for the Arlington Basil. Drive through parade. Instead of people congregating on Main Street and watch a parade come down Main Street. We actually planned on swift swapping that around, switching that around. To where the folks are on the north and south side of Main Street and people in cars. Um, to follow the governor's guidelines on COVID, uh, people inside cars would drive down Main Street. And still see the flows, see the lights, see the ambiance of all days in Harlem. Um, Don Burgess is the area ham coordinator. We use him everywhere to help with law enforcement. Uh, spent a lot of time with Andrew, Chief Andrew on, uh. We do with law enforcement every year on the planning of this. Everything seems to go on. We got the permit from, uh, the county. Um, we're in the works of getting a permit from the DOT. The only thing that they require us is that we get the signs that we always get. Um, we're going to get the signs from Minneapolis to say, let's people know on Highway five as they come in that there'll be temporary stops. Um, Highway five is manned by law enforcement. Uh, some of the emergency routes or places where we have to be able to, if there's an emergency. Will either be manned by law enforcement or ham radio safety personnel. Uh, we plan on blocking off the sidewalks. Um, we're looking at if we come up with enough barricades, blocking off the streets, block back, so you look at Adams. And all to help make sure to keep people away. Uh, any advertising, uh, that we do on this will be, um, talking about, you know. COVID, uh, restrictions, COVID requirements that need to be, uh, if you're too. People, a, only a certain number of people will be able to be on, well, depending on the size of the wall, obviously, so you hear six foot distancing. People have to stay on there for, any, uh, onlookers or people that want to come and see have to remain in their vehicle. Um, well, safety personnel, making sure that traffic continues to move down Main Street and they have the fourth avenue. They'll be directed to either head north out Highway five or to head south, make it to North Henderson. Use Northland Road to get to five or take seventeen all the way down to, time room now. This, uh, this plan does, uh. Avoid by all governor's regulations, uh, COVID regulations. Um, it keeps people from congregating. And we request, uh, the city Arlington to grant the permit to be able to, uh, block the street off. For that day and that time.
I would just like to add, Don Burgess, who is the ham radio operator. He did come in to meet with me last week and go over just some rough plans of, uh, how everything will be staged. Uh, how people will, how he'll direct traffic through town. I, I think they do an excellent job, the ham radio guys, and I have faith in Don. That he will do an excellent job with this too, even though it's not the typical Arlington Basil. I, he's already planning and he's measuring out, uh, how far apart the float should be. I think he'll do a good job.
What about the, uh, attractions such as food vendors, maybe the reindeer, dog sled, ice sculpture, fish camp? What are, what's the status of all of those?
Um, we, we, yes, we, we canceled all of those. We may look at ice sculpture if we come up with. Money for, um, reason being, it could be something that you see drive by, it stays afterwards, people can see it drive by. Um, you don't have to get out of your car, that's it. Reindeer, dog sled, food vendors, stuff like that, uh, we're not looking at. That's not to say, uh, you know, if it's not part of this plan. Um, food vendors, obviously the state of Minnesota, uh, the state fair, it's so that can be done. And still by, by, uh, COVID regulations. If we come up with eighty folds, we don't have spot to put them. So that's, it's not really a. In the, it's not in this, this plan strictly for a late drive through. Do you have businesses interested already for like votes to be part? Uh, we haven't released this to the public, so has anybody approached? Um, you, lots of people have approached, uh, both the paper, news paper, the city, saying what's going on. So I think it's a good idea to bring these people to town. So it's something where a lot of things.
Should I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion just for the request.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Sharpie, second by councilmember Bachelor to approve the request to close Main Street for Arlington Basil and drag through the event. On December fifth, twenty twenty. For the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Item fifteen, discussion hiring part-time EMTs. Welcome back, Jamie.
We did go through this at our council workshop, uh, because it affects the budget. I wanted to talk about it when we were talking about budgets. But Jamie, if you could go ahead and just go through, uh, what we were talking about at the workshop.
Absolutely. Um, one of the ideas that we're coming up is, um, looking at. What I would like to call staffing, our schedule Monday through Friday. Um, with a potential for part-time EMTs and that part-time EMT would essentially work in-house. Which means they would be required to be at ambulance hall from six AM to six PM and work in conjunction with a paramedic Monday through Friday. I did include some. Some preliminary calculations, just to kind of see what it would cost, um, with different variations, whether they be in-house for the full twelve hours. Um, or if they would actually have some on-call in addition to in-house hours and vice versa. Just that a lot of our, our staff right now, they do work full-time jobs during the day and it's just an addition. Uh, it's kind of an additional stress for them to have to cover daytime shift versus night time shift and the weekends. So this is just an idea that I was able to kind of pick up and see if you guys would be interested.
And the number that Jamie was given and that we discussed at the workshop was thirty thousand dollars. She would have to work with for part-time EMTs.
This would be beginning January one, twenty twenty one or sooner.
Ideally, it would be sooner.
It would be going along with the twenty twenty one budget, Mayor.
Going along with the budget, but do we have?
Well, that's, that goes back to the, we don't know how much money is left in, in the ambulance budget. So I will definitely be reaching out to Gaylord.
As you can see too, I did make a notation in there, but I didn't, um, put any like training costs in here, just because I. I have had some interest from our current staff, um, potentially taking on this. Position, work multiple positions, so it'd be nice to, um, hire within first and then reach out. But need to look appealing if I don't have the staff interest.
Yeah, I was just thinking about if, if we had, uh, some shifts that weren't covered throughout the year. That would have been money that wouldn't have been spent, so maybe we, maybe there's a chance that we have some. This year, yeah, that would allow us to, to try to get this rolling sooner.
No, I think the need is there right now, so. Be, be able to try and.
I think the interest is there right now, especially if the people are employed.
Yes.
So consensus to move forward with that, uh, do we wanna? You wanna vote on it?
I think I'd like a vote on it, to actually have a motion and vote.
Is there a motion to move forward with the hiring of part-time EMTs?
I'll make motions to, uh, move forward on, uh, hiring, uh, a part-time, uh, EMT for day shift.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Morgan, second by councilmember I'm right, to move forward with the, uh, hiring of part-time EMTs. And, uh. I guess, you know, as funds become available, I guess we've even, uh, just have to have the, after that, uh, motion. With the, uh, annual amount set at about thirty thousand dollars or thirty thousand for calendar year twenty twenty one.
Correct.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. In here, councilmember Bachelor.
I was four.
Okay. Motion's carried. All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Miss Lady's business, uh, I'll take the first one here. I just wanna remind everyone, there is a deadline tomorrow. And that is to get your evaluation forms in to me for the city administrator evaluation. That is tomorrow and as soon as I get those, I can start putting together the, uh. Uh, the report that we will take a look at for council meeting in November. Is there anything else? Committee updates and committee meetings that were held that we haven't talked about or heard yet? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I just wanna bring to the council attention, um, Wayne Meyer. Contact me a couple ways, we've posted messaging, uh, basically in regard to the incident that happened last week at the motel. Talked with him for a while, closed down his business for four hours, I believe. Uh, which you said at the time wasn't a big deal in terms of his name, so anyways, the police was what's happened. Um, but it had been a late night, it really would affect his business. Now, after reading the police report. And knowing what goes on, you know, not knowing exactly what goes on at that hotel, hotel and goes in there. Um, being as by a school and there's soul kids walking back and forth all the time. We need this, maybe something we need to start looking at.
I did, uh, Matt and I talked earlier today and I did reach out to the state of Minnesota today. Uh, the entity in charge of licensing the motel. And we talked about health and safety concerns there and people living there. And claiming it as their residency on a driver's license and that puts them into a different category, cause then they're considered apartments. So the gentleman I talked to, his name is Ben Ishi. I've spoken with him before. He's the one who also looks at our trailer park and he's also the one who inspects our kitchen. So I'm familiar with him. So he was going to give the owner of the motel a call today. And see if he could basically have a chat with him about our, is, are you renting your rooms by the night? Or is it long-term? And if so, your licenses would need to change. I also, he told me to reach out to Civil County Public Health. Because it's a health and safety concerns over there, so I did. I reached out to Clea Rutman today, but I have not heard back yet.
So there is some activity taking place in that direction.
Yeah, I think you see that, that more and more at, uh, at what I call, the, the smaller, the older motels. Are kind of turned into the, uh, you know, where people are living there more on a month-to-month basis and. And that's something that they need to get re-licensed, that's something we should be pushing for.
Yep.
It's not too often do you see someone that's actually just staffed and stay for a couple of days. It's typically they're kind of living in, at least, those are my observations.
Right, I understand that some people have that address on their driver's license now.
Well, that's, that's not right.
That's what I called the state of Minnesota and I, and they were like, wow, I haven't heard that one before, is what he said.
When they are licensed, as, as this one is licensed now, or in the hotel, is there inspections take place?
Every two years, inspections take place.
But yeah, that would be. That would be based on, you know, nightly stays probably different than, uh, if you were to live there for like a six weeks or something.
Correct, that's a different license.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, there's another, there's a place just like that in Bill Blaine that's kind of running the same thing and. You know, you, you see them in different towns, so it's something that others are faced with as well.
Okay, well, that is being looked into and. We'll hear about hopefully in the future meeting. Any other discussion items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by councilmember online, second by councilmember Bachelor for adjourn, I'm here to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Meeting adjourned at seven fifty seven PM.
Bye-bye.
Good night. Thanks for partying.